All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the City Council for January 21st, 2025. Councilmember Booker will lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day that we have. We just want to ask you to come in here and the council be in our hearts, be in our minds, Lord, as you watch upon this state, Lord, this country, most of all, our city. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you will give us that servant's heart to lead and be there for all the people in our various wards, Lord, and just help us to do the things we need to do to continue to serve you. We just ask for your blessings and bless this meeting, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And just with two new council members, I'm just gonna explain some things that we don't normally explain, just to keep you all informed. Feel free to hit your button or holler if you have any questions about the process, and I'll be happy to answer them. With that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. The January 6th regular meeting minutes were provided in the council packet. I'll open the floor for discussion. If there is none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
I've got a motion, second, to adopt the minutes of the January 6th regular meeting. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That moves us to public comment. What we do for public comments is any resident or individual can put in a public comment form. If it is on an agenda item, it's on a resolution or an ordinance or something that we'll be discussing later, we hold those public comments so that they're talking at the time we're discussing that. If they're just general public comments, they speak at the head of the meeting. And so, Mr. Knight, come on down, please. If you could state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it, sir. Good evening. My name is John Knight, and I live at 121 Broken Ridge Lane here in Maumell. And I appreciate the time this morning, this afternoon, Mayor Norris and council members and other members as well. What I wanted to bring to the attention of the leadership of Maumell today is I want to talk about residential road clearance. And so, I've lived here for seven years on Broken Ridge Lane, which is a pretty good hill. And I know as a city, we do very, very well as far as clearance for the main thoroughfares throughout Odom Street and others. We just seem to be lacking. I haven't noticed any clearance happening in the residential areas that I have seen. So, when I say clearance, that's a wide variety of things. And I realize in three minutes, I'm gonna make it really fast and furious, so bear with me. With that, I mean sand and salt and feasible and possible plowing. I'm not talking about with a 20-ton dump. I'm not talking about with a 10-ton. There are several venues that we can look at, equipment and labor and materials to do so. One of the big factors, since I know we do some clearing, would be additional budget to the city. And I propose tonight that we look at forming a working group to look at the feasibility of establishing such a working committee, and I'd gladly participate my time and expertise where I can and where if it should be wanted. I ask that within 30 days, if that working group is formed, then we could report back, Mayor Norris, as you give direction and guidance to that. That working group should establish the mission, look at equipment, materials, and labor, and feasible budget, and then turn it over to the leadership to make the appropriate decisions. All right? I'll answer any questions at this time. My three minutes are about up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
With that, we'll move on to the financial statement review. And Ms. Sousa, come on down.
So, good evening, everybody. I'm going to present the preliminary closing for December 2024, because as you know, this month, we have adjustments, we can have some reviews for all the year. So, but I wanted to present you at least a version that we consider is preliminary. I gave you some notes. So, let's go first for the general fund in page number one. I highlighted for you just the main changes that we have. If you can see, as of December of 2024, the property tax and the sales tax collections were lower than expected for about $200,000. However, we have some additional revenue that helped us to be above budget for $316,000 at the end of the year. The additional revenue we had was in the planning and permits department, because we have higher revenue than budget for $165,000 for buildings, permits, collections. We also have investment earnings, because the interest paid by the bank for the full year 2024 was $218,000 more than the original budget. And we have miscellaneous revenue. As you remember, we have in this line, the insurance that we collected and some other miscellaneous revenue that we have from different departments that could be the animal services that did very good in 2024. And as of December 2024, we are $937,000 above 2023 budget. So, we did pretty well on budget in the preliminary numbers. If you look at expenditures, all of the departments are within their revised budget 2024. And when comparing '24 with '23, we can see a big jump here of increase of $8 million. But the main variances are as follow. We have in police and fire department, the expenditures were much higher in 2024 due to the salary and benefits increases that those two departments received. And we have in citywide services, we usually book in this line all the transfers that are done from general budget to the different projects we have. In this year, we have a big transfers to a capital improvement fund for the $3.2 million for a training facility and engine funds. We have a transfer to the FEMA drainage grant fund for $698,000 to match the drainage grant. We also have a transfer to the bond fund for $486,000 to cover bond payments. And the last one was a transfer to the grant fund for $2.4 million for the Gateway Project. So, this is the big increase in expenditures, are not expenditures, are more like capital investments that are managed in different projects. If you go to the line that says capital expenditures, they are higher than 2023, as we have in parks department, the payments that we did for the pickable complex construction in 2024 for $740,000. If you go to page two, you have there the fund balance. The fund balance, as of December 2024, our total fund balance is $7.3 million. We have designated funds for $345,000 to purchase orders. This is money that is already committed to make some purchases, but has not been paid. And we have a net fund balance for $7 million. The requirement for the own assigned fund amount is 20% of the revised budget. So, it's operational expenses that are $26 million. Times 20% will be $5.2 million. So, since we have $7 million, we are above requirements for $1.8 million still. In the next page, you have the street fund. In the street fund, we are aligned with the 2024 budget. Here, you just see a negative and positive in the street program revenues, but it's compensated with estate turnback. In the expenditure side, in the personnel, we remain under budget due to staffing vacancies through the year. In the 2024 operating expenses, it looks like much higher than 2023, but it's because we made that transfer of $1.2 million to the grant fund for the Club Manor Corridor project. And in the capital expenditures line, during this year, the public works, we did a lot of work. So, we finalized paying path improvements, street overlies, stripping for $494,000. We also, they also did street repairs for $775,000, and they bought the street equipment for $250,000. If you go to the street fund balance, as of December 2024, there are $3.5 million. But we already have designated fund for 537 to purchase orders. So, we have a net fund balance for $3 million in this fund. The next page four is our sanitation fund. And here, our expenditures, well, we all know, were higher than the revenues in 2024, in this case, for $330. We already increased the fees to the residents for the sanitation fund. So, as of December 2024, if you see below, we have a fund balance of $888,000. But it's very important that you read that fund, because most of the fund balance is invested in fixed assets for a net of $530,000. And we also gave an advance for a truck that may be delivered in 2026 for $300,000. The cash balance we have in this fund is $105,000. That is really the loan that we receive from the general fund balance. We will pay it back during 2025, as we collect the new revenue. In the page number five, we have the police and fire fund. This is just informative purposes. The trend of the collections, the .5, continue being on a regular basis, and we don't have fund balance here. As much as we have revenue, we have expenses. And just some financial updates. We will start the audit for 2024 in March 2025. We are going to start the process on preparing the audit schedules. We have the budget, we have the proposal for the auditors, and Andrew, I don't know if I need something else from, but I think everything is set up there here. And we are working on the 1099 forms that will be delivered to vendors during this week. The due date is the end of this month, but we plan to finish this week. And other than that, it's all the update as of December.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. This may be for you or for Ms. Beatrice. When was the, when is CAW going to start collecting that additional fee?
It will be collected on January's bills. So, I received a bill that is due later this week, but that bill was for December. So, when they bill for January is when it'll be.
That's why I was curious. I received my bill that's due in February, and it still had the old rate on there.
Double, I took my bill today and threw it in the drawer, just to make sure that I would follow it up with that. I was told when they're billing for January usage is when that'll be. So, it should be after January.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, sir.
But definitely something we're keeping an eye on.
Yes.
I was excited to pay you for hiring.
I've never looked at a bill and said, wow, that was, why is that not higher? Any additional questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financial report. I've got a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the procedural motion. I didn't really explain this last time. State law says that ordinances must be read in their entirety at three separate meetings. It's been the city's practice to waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety and just have the reading of the title. And then, we still traditionally have ordinances read at three separate meetings, although that can be waived as well. But at this time, I'd entertain a procedural motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
Still move? Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the second reading of ordinance 1141, amending the Maumell City Code regarding drainage. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1141, an ordinance to amend the Maumell City Code concerning storm drainage and for other purposes.
Thank you. Just to recap, this ordinance would just require developers, when they build, to provide for a 100-year storm event, and that is with above-ground facilities. We know that the underground facilities are designed currently, the ordinance is a 20-year event. But for 100-year events, what happens with that water? The goal is to make sure they're not, that 100-year flow is not going through people's homes, is the Cliff Notes version. Open the floor for discussion. All right, this will be on third reading at the next council meeting. That brings us to the second reading of ordinance 1142, to amend the City Code regarding the tree board. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1142, an ordinance to amend the Maumell City Code to reassign the duties of the tree board to the Department of Parks and Recreation and for other purposes.
All right, this effectively abolishes the tree board, which has remained largely vacant for a while. We had somebody that was president for a year or two, but there was no other real folks on it. The duties can be transferred over to Parks and Rec. And who does the bulk of the work anyways, in order to keep our tree board designation? There was a question last time about somebody who wanted to get involved. There's still opportunities to help volunteer and put on the Arbor Day event and to attend that, which is the, one of the big functions that the tree board had. So, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. All right, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. That brings us to new business. The first item of new business is just a discussion topic, which means there's not an ordinance or resolution directly attached to it. It's regarding a lawsuit that the city has an eminent domain action, where the White Oak Crossing roundabout is being constructed. We were able to negotiate with multiple landowners to purchase their right-of-way. There was one landowner that is a holdout, basically disagreeing on the value of the property that has been in litigation for a while, and I'll let the city attorney explain where we're at.
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder for the council members, our appraiser valued the strip of land that was taken at about $40,000 and change. The landowner's appraiser valued it at about $140,000 and change. We do have a trial date set. It's set in March. Kind of a companion to this discussion item is a mid-year budget resolution, which is the next item on the agenda. Part of your consideration, when you consider whether you should settle a case or the amount you should settle it for, of course, should be, well, if we do go forward to trial, what are we gonna spend to get a jury verdict? There's no real guarantee what a jury would come back with. Juries are famously unpredictable that way. I can guarantee you that it would be between our number and their number. They're also entitled to the cost of their appraisal under state law. So, we would be, also be on the hook for whatever the number was, we would be on the hook for another $5,000 and possibly more at the end of the case. Our, we've retained outside counsel to act as co-counsel with me on the case, and then, of course, we've retained an expert appraiser. The estimate to get through a jury trial would be about $40,000 for outside expenses. So, where have the negotiations been? Well, the last offer the city made, and this was gonna be contingent on city council approving it, but the last offer the city had made to the landowner's attorneys was $100,000. And theirs, their counteroffer to us was 100, is $125,000. So, knowing that it'll cost us a certain amount of money to get through a verdict, how might a jury address the case? Jury might say, well, you've got experts on both sides, let's just split the difference. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be shocked if a jury did that, although, of course, we would want them to come in agreement with us. There's no guarantee of that. And if the jury did split the difference, the jury would split it at about $90,000 or $95,000 then. Now, near $95,000 plus another $40,000 just to get that number would put us at about $130, $135,000. With the city council's approval, I'd ask for permission to make a last and final offer of $112,500. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council members may have.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. This project was funded in part by grants, and I'm forgetting the specific one, but part of that would go into land acquisition, correct? Could it have been used for land acquisition?
That is correct. I was talking with city attorney about this before the meeting. We think that the, yes, it can cover that. We didn't budget into that project approximately three times the appraised value for this. So, there is a chance we could get up to 80% of our price back, but that depends on the project funds or what they are. So, that would require construction and like to come in at or slightly below current prices.
Okay.
Which we're tracking currently. So, I won't know until the end of the project what amount of the difference between the $42,000 and change that we originally budgeted and, which is on par to be reimbursed at 80%. So, that difference between the 42 and the, if we settle it at 112.5, some percentage that may be reimbursed at 80%.
So, I guess that was my question. I know in the past, we have been able to go back and file for an additional amount due to cost increases. I didn't know if that was an option.
It is an option, but that eats up one of our applications. So, for example, just for everyone else's knowledge, that means this year, when it comes time to ask for STBG funds through Metro Plan and RDOT, that we can either do something like apply for a big project of up to millions of dollars or apply for an overage of any amount. In this case, the overage would be up to 80,000. I would advise against that, because the likelihood of us getting a larger grant for a bigger project would outweigh the differences.
Okay. And so, then, since we are splitting this with North Little Rock, approximately 80%, 20%, is that, is that accurate?
The split between North Little Rock and Maumell is 75-25.
Okay.
So, of the, of the total project costs, Metro Plan pays 80%, we pay 15, and North Little Rock pays 5. But if anything not reimbursed by Metro Plan is split 75-25.
Okay. That's what I was trying to drill down to, is, is any of this gonna come back to us on the back end, possibly? But it's sounding like it's coming out of the project budget.
No, we would need a, what I would advise doing is a budget resolution, if this is accepted, for that difference, paying for the project, and then seeking reimbursement from the grant and/or North Little Rock upon project completion, because we would know then the best way to divvy that out.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
So, you said you want to offer them 112.5, right? So, we don't know that they'll even accept this, right? There's no guarantee that once you offer it, that they'll even take this, and we...
Correct.
Okay. And we'll just be back at square one?
Well, not back at square one, back, we're set for trial in March.
Right.
And they feel the same pressures for, that trial, or associated with trial that we feel. They have the same uncertainties that we have.
Okay.
We, after looking at this, it's always hard. We started at 42, that, you may remember, a representative of the applicant came in several years ago and was advocating, and we relooked at it, I think we came up with another offer, and we continue to go up in our offers. At this point, with the, having nailed down the cost of litigation, at this point, it's probably prudent to make a last and final counteroffer of 112.5. And so, I'd entertain a motion to do just that.
Still move?
Okay.
Got a motion, a second, for a last and final counteroffer of $112,500. Councilmember Williams?
Oh, no, that's messy.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, and the city attorney will relay that offer over. Did you need to relay to the city council the last offer from?
I did, 25, is what I said it was. Yes.
With that, the, the next item is actually the resolution to appropriate funds to defend this matter. I was talking with the city attorney. It probably is prudent to continue with this resolution, and then, if we don't need it to come back and, or we don't even need to come back, just not spend that money. There is some funds that have been spent in, up to this point, in January. And so, if we make this offer, we can tell them pencils down, and those costs stop accruing, but we still will have something. So, this allows us to not have to come back in the event that the offer is denied to request additional monies to fund the litigation. If we don't need it, we won't use it. So, I'd prefer to go forward with this resolution in which, but I'm, I'd also entertain the notion of just tabling this until later. It does need to be read, yes. So, Councilmember Tierney, was your comments on the issue of whether to read the, to hear this resolution?
No, it's about the action for resolution.
Okay, let's go with the reading, then, if you don't mind, sir. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read Resolution 2025-02 by title only, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2025-02, a resolution to amend the 2025 general fund budget.
Thank you. Hang on a second, we might have lost the live feed. Okay, I think we might be back up. If not, we will get this posted back. There's a delay, otherwise, I'll wave to myself and see if... There's a delay, otherwise I'll wave to myself and see if it pops up. We had the reading, so I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I like the idea of going ahead and having this already in place in case our counter is rejected because I believe it sends a clear message like, look, if you don't want to prove this, this is the other route that we are going to go. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-02.
I've got a motion in a second. Any additional discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes new business. For Mayor's comments, I just want to note the Arkansas Municipal League was this last week, and I think, I think it was one of the better ones that I've attended in the last few years, especially. Sort of their keynote speaker was really on point and motivating. He has a book and some information out there for anyone. I think his book was 13 Ways to, you bought the book? Yeah, I know. You're the second person that bought the book that I know of. There, it was 13 Ways to Destroy a Community. And he said that, that tends to be more interesting than reading 13 Things You Really Need to Do. And so I'd encourage you to see if you can find anything on that. Also at the municipal league, the city won a couple of awards. One of the ones I'm most proud of is actually, the city was awarded the Volunteer Community of the Year Award. I'm most proud of that because it's not, it's not stuff that the city does necessarily. It is a good indication of the community that we live in. Mammell has, we're celebrating our 40th birthday this year since the incorporation, and 17 of those years, the city has won Volunteer Community of the Year. There were only seven cities that were awarded this, this year. Even more excitedly is this year, they broke it down instead of just everyone getting the same Volunteer Community of the Year Award. And they were broken out into different categories. And the city of Mammell, the residents of Mammell, the people in this community won the best overall city in terms of that. And so that's exciting to get that. We pass that sign coming in and out of the city that says Volunteer Community of the Year. There's 500, I don't know how many cities anymore, 510 cities in the state. They only gave out seven. And so for us to get it 17 years out of the 40 we've been in existence is great for. You know, and so that is, it just speaks to the community that we're in. Thank you, Deb, for making that application and making everything sound good. We also received in the, which is important, right? You have, you have to apply and sell it a little bit. But the city won two Trendsetter Awards. We were the winner in education workforce development, and that is primarily for our relationship with the Friendship Lab School for Dyslexia. I encourage you to read that right up if you haven't. We received also an honorable mention in the Tourism Development and Creative Culture for the all-inclusive playground that we have here. So again, I believe Sydney was the one that helped put these applications together. So thank you to her, and of course, those programs are pretty neat and exciting. It was very fun to continue to go up on stage to receive award after award. It makes me feel special, even though they're really the people's awards, so to speak. Also with the, I wanted to give a shout out to the snow crew that was out and about. We received far less complaints or concerns this year than most years. I think part of that is it was good, what I'll call good snow. It was snow that snowed instead of ice that froze and snow that came down on top of the ice. Fun fact, you know, we don't think about this. I love snow days. I hope to go outside with my, my kids and play in the snow. I like driving around the city and slipping and sliding down hills when I, when I can find them and see if I can get out. And I do. And the, it is interesting to think that my experience with snow days is quite different than some of the staff. They, some of these folks on the snow crew have never played with their children in the snow, and their children have grown up. Because when it's snow, when it's inclement weather time, they camp out at Public Works and they're on duty. I don't want to say 24/7, but they sleep in the building and they, they get worn out at the end, and it's something we, we sometimes can take for granted. When I think of that, when I think of like, I couldn't imagine having my kids and never have it, never playing with them in the snow because I always worked. So Mike, thank you to you and your crew for the work that y'all do. And we did have a public comment on that. So Mike, would you mind coming down? If you don't mind, I think I gave you a heads up in text message and just kind of talk to us a little bit about how y'all prioritize roads and what your thoughts are on what you're doing and how come you didn't come plow my street, my cul-de-sac?
So when these snow events start, you know, we call everybody in, get everything geared up and ready. There's not a whole lot you can do until the event kind of ends. You can get out there and be seen and plow. Usually where you plow, it gets covered up if the event is still going on. So, so we try to make big pushes at night when people are off the road. You can get more done at nighttime throughout the middle of the night. We've got two tandem axle dump trucks with spreaders in them with plows that we start out on the main roads, the boulevard, North and South Odom. We try to get everything cleared out for police and fire and rescue. Then we start in the industrial park to try and, you know, get the trucks coming in and out to the businesses. And then we look at sanitation. If landfills are open, if we can go and dump, we'll try and pick up trash. But we have to make sure that the streets that the routes are being picked up on are safe and have them plowed or salted and sanded the best we can. So we kind of get all of that done, then we start on the secondary roads and the neighborhoods and stuff. So that, that's kind of the layout of it, so to speak. And I know some people get frustrated. They live on hillsides and stone ledges. One of them, Cherokee, Mammell Valley Drive. Some of these hills are even dangerous for our own trucks to get up and down. And we try not to put our employees in jeopardy or running through somebody's living room. So this event was pure snow, like the mayor was saying. It's easier to get around in, you get more traction. We didn't have to put chains or cables on the wheels to get around when we have these more icy events. You know, we put the chains and, and stuff on, on the vehicles, so. Yeah, that's kind of the gist of it. I do know that, I know the resident here commented there's different treatments, different things that you can put on there. Yes, that's true. It does come with an expense. We use salt, calcium, and sand. Usually in Arkansas, that's a pretty hot mix for our area. And, you know, RDOT uses the beet juice. They, they pre-treat it, but you have to store it, have containers to load your vehicles up to go out and pre-treat. They usually don't pre-treat secondary roads. It's just the main roads that they, they pre-treat. It does work. So, you know, if this is something that, that the city wanted to take in consideration, I can get some prices on that. But it does come with storage facilities that you have to build to store it. So, but yeah. If there's, yeah, any questions, anybody's got?
Thank you.
Happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. I just thought it would be a little bit helpful, especially for the newer folks, to hear that. Some veterans have probably heard that a few times around. That concludes Mayor comments. We'll move on to council member comments. If there are none, city attorney comments. City clerk comments?
I just wanted to thank the chamber and their team and the city that participated. It's also the 40-year for the chamber, Kelly Wall and Kendria Parker, Deb Roush, Courtney Dunn, all of the people who participated in it and all of the honorees. I just want to say job well done, and I look forward to working more with the chamber and the citizens this year.
Sweet, thank you. If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting of January 21st, 2025.
I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for your service.